Ladies and gentlemen, we welcome the next president of the United States, Mr. Donald Trump.
You feel so bad there. Outside, we have 5,000 people, they can't get in, I jump in. I want to apologize, we have speakers outside, but I want to apologize. Who would have thought, we have over 5,000 people cannot get in, so. Now, does anybody want to leave and give your place to somebody else? I had a feeling you might be saying that. It's an honor to be here, it's an honor to be with you. And very important, you know, we're doing really well. Millions of votes ahead of Cruz, millions. We're gonna get a picture, come on, lie in bed, lie in bed please. He stands up, and I'm winning, I win, as you know, you've seen it. I have been winning all of the evangelical vote. But he stands up Bible high, puts it down, and then he lies, you know, it's like an amazing... It's amazing to watch it, but he said, "Yeah, I'm the only one that can beat Donald Trump. I've done it time after time." And I said, "Wait a minute, I've won, like, most of the states. I think he had five or six, and I had 20 or 22." Right? And I said, "I can't believe it." Then I have millions of votes more. He says, "I'm the only one that can outvote him." And I'm saying, "But I have, like, millions of votes more." I'll tell you something, so important. There is something happening, it's like a movement, it's incredible. It's a movement, and we're part of the movement. It's not me, I'm a messenger, to be honest. I'm a messenger. And this is something that's so special, and so amazing. And it's on the cover of Time Magazine, it's on the cover of every newspaper, it's something that has never, that has maybe never happened, and they're saying it's a phenomenon. Sometimes they say, "I'm a phenomenon," I'm not. The message is what we want. We want jobs, we want jobs. We want trade deals that are smart deals, not stupid deals. And you know, Wisconsin, I wrote down some notes, and look, I didn't think, I thought I had, yeah, it's one of those things, look. I wrote down some notes, and it's like, it's like devastating. So Walker came out today, I wrote down notes about Wisconsin. Look, he certainly can't endorse me after what I did to him in the race, right? But remember this. By the summer of 2015, Wisconsin was facing a $2.2 billion, two-year budget deficit. That's terrible. By the way, these are out of books, right? This isn't Trump, this is out of books. Total state debt is $45 billion. Now, maybe somebody's gonna tell me that's wrong, but again, these are, $45 billion, very high, one of the higher ones. 20,000 fewer people in labor force in Wisconsin than seven years ago, even though population has grown by 100,000. So your population is higher, and now, I wouldn't have done this, but when he endorsed Cruz, what am I gonna do? Am I gonna say he's doing a great job? He's not doing a great job. You know, he comes in in his motorcycle jacket, a big Harley, I love Harleys, right? But the motorcycle guys like Trump, they really like Trump. And he doesn't look like a motorcycle guy to me, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Unemployment rate, well, they say, "That can't be possible." Unemployment rate, they have down 20%, that can't be possible. What? Is it 20%? Effective or regular? I mean, just effective unemployment rate, 20%? Hey, this is out of the big book. 800,000 food stamp recipients. Middle class hit very, very hard due to loss of manufacturing jobs. These are the, these are the stats, right? You know about this, right? It goes on and on. Wisconsin has lost 15,000 net jobs to Mexico since NAFTA. Now, just so you understand, Kasich is running also, we forget about him. He voted for NAFTA. Both of them want TPP. TPP, Trans-Pacific Partnership. Both of them want Trans-Pacific. That will make NAFTA look like a baby, and Wisconsin will be hit so hard. You a motorcycle guy? I'll bet, right? Am I right? Do they love Trump? I don't even know why I'm not big with the motorcycles. But do motorcycle guys love Trump? Ah, look, I love the disabled veterans and the veterans. We're gonna take care of our veterans, you know that, right? We're gonna take care of our veterans. What is it about Trump that they like? Ah, seriously, we went to Hilton Head, we went to different places, and there were hundreds, hundreds of bikers out there. Beautiful bikes, lots of Harleys, right? Lots of Harleys, but made in America. But beautiful, beautiful bikes, what is it with the, why do they like me? Tell me. Who said that? Who said? I love it. I don't know what it is, but they like me, I feel good with them, I feel safe, I got out, I took a picture. Secret Service went crazy, I said, "These are great people, don't worry about it." But listen, I appreciate it, fellas, I appreciate it. I know, just keep you free, you're right, we're gonna keep you free, I'm gonna keep you free. Because we're getting more devices, we're gonna have good borders, we're gonna have borders again. We're gonna have borders again. So here, here we have something that's pretty interesting. One, I love you too. You lost 70,000 jobs to China, 70,000 jobs. 100,000 illegal immigrants living in Wisconsin, taxpayers are paying tens of millions of dollars. Oh, yeah, look, I don't know, look, yeah, I don't know. So what happened with Walker, and I guess we'll finish off with this. He's a nice man, he came up to my office, like, about a year ago, before I was, I did the, you know, I've been a politician for about eight months, right? I never thought I'd be a politician, the last thing on my mind I wanted to be was a politician. But I built a great company, I filed papers, everybody's amazing, the company is incredible, very little debt, tremendous cash flow, some of the great assets of the world. And I say that not in a bragging way, I say that because that's the kind of thinking we need, folks, I mean, I just, we can't have China ripping us off, and Mexico, Japan, and Vietnam, we can't have it. We can't have it. And they are ripping us like they've never ripped anybody before. We've rebuilt China. I mean, we're rebuilding Mexico. You look the other day, you saw Carrier moving down, Carrier Air Conditioner, I buy those air conditioners, a lot of them, I'm not buying any more of them, but Carrier Air Conditioner moving to Mexico, Ford moving to Mexico. Nabisco, home of the wonderful, formerly wonderful Oreo, which we don't eat anymore, right? We don't need it, we don't need it. Number one, it's a good way, it's a good order, called enforced diet. But you know what? Look, we're losing our jobs. Look at your jobs. When I see that statistic, I mean, you're losing your jobs. When I went after your governor, when he decided to run, and I said, "You know, I'm gonna be nice to him, he's a nice guy," the guy came up to my office, he handed me a plaque, because I supported him. What do I know? I supported him, I gave him $50,000 or $100,000, that's a lot of money for a guy you've never met before, right? That's pretty good. But I liked the fact he was fighting, fighting, he was always fighting. You know, to a certain extent, I'd rather see somebody able to make a deal without having to go through all of that mess. But he was fighting, and I gave him a lot of money, and he came up, you know, a year ago or so, and he gave me a plaque. Beautiful picture of something, I haven't, I never really got too ready to be honest with you. And I put it aside, that was it. I just had my girl find it, she just called, she said, "Mr. Trump, I've just found it. A wonderful woman comes up," and she, I said, "Where is it?" She said, "I think I know," and she found it, under a pile of a lot of other plaques. So, so, I'll bring it, I'm gonna try getting it if I can tomorrow or the next day, so to work, because I'm gonna be here the whole week, I'm gonna be in Wisconsin, the whole week. Because, because if we were in Wisconsin, it's, it's like, gonna be over, pretty much over. Because we're gonna do great. Emerson, because Emerson poll, Emerson poll came out, I think I have 67, 68% in New York compared to like 10% or whatever, and you had Cruz talking about New York values, New Yorkers are no good, New Yorkers. I watched New Yorkers rebuild the World Trade Center, I watched New Yorkers dying, probably do, New Yorkers are good, New Yorkers are very good. But Cruz said they're no good, so, anyway. So I think we're gonna do great in New York, we're gonna do great in New Jersey, Chris Christie endorsed me, we'll do great in New Jersey, good guy. Ben Carson endorsed me, Sarah Palin, Sarah Palin endorsed me. Sheriff Joe from Arizona, we love Sheriff Joe. And, you know, with the evangelicals, I've had so many ministers, I've had so many pastors endorse me, and Jerry Falwell Jr. endorsed me, it was incredible, and we've done so well with the, with the evangelicals, I mean, Christians, evangelicals, we've done so well. In fact, in South Carolina, when we went to South Carolina, that was going to be Cruz's territory, he was gonna take it. Except we won in a landslide, you know that, you saw it, he was there, this guy follows me around, I'll tell you. But you were there, right? You remember, he was gonna win that in a landslide. And then I started speaking, I started talking to people, and I started saying, you know, the good and the bad and the ugly. And we won in a landslide, and we won the evangelicals. I've won just about, I think, almost every place I've won with evangelicals. And it's been an amazing, it's been an amazing time. So now I'm here to talk to the people of Wisconsin. I have friends in Wisconsin, I've been here before, it's an incredible place, but it's a place that has problems. But you have a governor that has you convinced that it doesn't have problems. Now, I remember when he was on the campaign trail, I was so nice to him, you know, I said, "How can I hit him? I'm not gonna hit him, I'm not gonna hit him." And I was so nice, I hit Jeb instead, right? And I hit Rand, Rand, oh Rand. And I hit a lot of people, and they all went down. Wouldn't it be nice to have a president that could just with his mouth make things happen that are positive? But it's, it's not with the mouth, it's really with the mouth, the heart, and the brain. Remember the brain. I have a lot of friends, they're good, they're good with the mouth, but they're not, they're not good with the brain, it all doesn't work, okay? You know, we had an interesting thing today, a poll came out, a nationwide poll, it was a great poll. It was Trump 48, it was an NBC poll. Trump 48, I think Cruz was second in the twenties, mid twenties something, and Kasich was way down. So what happened is they showed the poll, it was an NBC poll, they call it NBC Monkey Poll. And it was on the Today Show. And it was on Morning Joe, Morning Joe held it up, he said, "Wow, those are great numbers, 48's pretty good, you have three people," you know, "I don't get enough credit for that." I've been at 42, 44, 45, and I've had like seven people. How do you get 45 when you have seven people? Nobody says that, they said, "He hasn't cracked 50 yet." How do you crack 50 when you have all these people running? So I'm at 48, poll was good, way, way ahead of anybody else nationwide. And they showed Hillary Clinton, hers is very close, she's got a little problem, couldn't happen, got a bigger problem with emails than she has, I think, with Bernie, to be honest with you. She should have, her bigger problem should be with emails, we'll find out, we'll find out how honest our country is, right? But, but she's got a sort of close race, and they put her poll up, it was, you know, put up there, big letter. And then they said, "And Donald Trump is winning." And I was like, they didn't say, they didn't put numbers up, they didn't say, "I'm doing great." In fact, they actually said Donald Trump is winning, and they put some, a little slightly negative statistic in, it was like, wait a minute, they put her numbers up, and they didn't put my numbers up. Folks, it's so unfair, the press is so dishonest, it's unbelievable. That was Chuck Todd. That was, that was Chuck Todd, this morning on the Today Show, check it out. They put Hillary's numbers up, and I'm winning by a lot, and they said Donald Trump is winning, you know, let's go to a new subject, okay? Now, I guarantee you one thing, if I was losing, or doing poorly, it'll still be up, it'll be up all morning. Because they don't like what's happening. I'm self-funding my campaign, I'm putting up my own money. They don't like it. Ted Cruz and Kasich are getting money from the banking industry, from the energy industries, they're getting money from the pharmaceutical companies, they're getting money from everybody. Folks, you can't straighten out this mess, we're in a mess, if you can't do what you have to do. When millions of dollars are given to Cruz and Kasich, and millions from different industries, you're not gonna be able to say, "Well, we're gonna do and go against the banking industry to do what's right for the people," if the banking industry gave you millions of dollars. Now, that's true with Hillary also, because she's gotten millions of dollars. But I'm the only one self-funding my campaign? I'm in for a lot of money, I'm in a lot of money. What was beautiful is when I was running against Jeb in New Hampshire, I was in for $2 million, Jeb was in for like $48 million, I was in first, and he was close to last. I said, "Who do you want as your president?" By the way, did Jeb endorse anybody yet? Because I haven't, I think Jeb probably endorsed, must have endorsed. Huh? Did he endorse? That shows you how important it is, nobody even knows, I don't even know. No, he probably, look, he endorsed, just so you know, look, when you're in war, you gotta fight, and you fight hard. When I fight, I win, you're gonna win, you know that. You're gonna win. But you know, you do pretty serious damage, right? Because you wanna win, you wanna win fast, and a lot of people don't love you after you're finished. But I just love you, I don't care about them. In fact... In fact, they're asking Cruz, you know, at the debate, which, by the way, they said, "I won every single debate." Now, I heard the other night, it said, "Hard-witted debate Trump." I've debated him 11 or 12 times, every single online poll has me winning the debates. And he's an okay debater, but he's a bad talker, you know, everything's so dramatic, oh, and he waits, phony, and he waits, you know, have you ever seen, he goes sentence after sentence, then he stops for like three, four seconds, and then he goes again. It looks like we're in the theater, we're not in the theater, we're in the real world. So, so what happens? That's all right, thank you very much. Yeah, thank you very much. By the way, the sheriff is here, he's a great guy, and his people are fantastic. Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you. The, I mean, the only thing I feel so guilty about all the people outside, so feel so guilty, we're gonna come back, I'm gonna come back, we're gonna come back to this area, you guys, you guys cannot come. Okay? All of the ladies can come, but the guys can't. But, 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 all of the people outside, we're gonna take a bigger place, we're gonna, we're gonna get, sorry, because I feel, I feel slightly, I feel slightly guilty. But look, look, we have a very serious mess on our hands, we have a serious situation, we have a country that's not protected, we have a country that's sitting on a big fat bubble, that's gonna explode. In a certain way, I said, "Let it do now, don't do it after I get in." Three days later, it'll explode, they'll say it's Trump's fault, okay? Ay, 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 we are in a big, fat, ugly bubble. We have interest rates that are so low, that if you're rich, like me, I can borrow money for any amount. If you're a hard-working guy with a great farm, or you're a hard-working developer or businessman, you can't borrow money. You can only borrow money really cheaply, think how bad that is. You can borrow money for nothing practically, if you're rich. But if you're rich, you don't need the money, so you don't have to borrow. But if you're a business person, you wanna go to the bank for loan, you can't get it. The regulators are running the banks. Dodd-Frank is a disaster, by the way, it's a disaster. But the biggest disaster, our regulations, our rules, regulations are horrible, we're gonna get rid of probably 85% of them, there are some we live with, but we gotta go back. So many people from this area have told me, regulations, regulatory climate is the worst they've ever seen it. I have a friend, he's a farmer, and if a puddle forms, they consider it a lake for purposes of environmental, they consider, it's like a puddle, and they consider it a lake, so we don't know what we're doing. So here's what's happening. We're gonna make our country so great again, we're gonna make our country so strong again, our military's gonna be so amazing. We're never gonna have to use it. Don't forget, I didn't wanna go into Iraq. All these guys think that I'm a tough guy, so I'll be so quick with the trigger, I'm not gonna be quick. I was the smallest with the trigger, I didn't want the trigger. Now, when Obama left, though, he shouldn't have left the way he did, he gave a certain date, and the enemy said, "Can't be possible, nobody would be that stupid." Nobody. So I actually don't think it hurt that much, because I don't think the enemy ever believed that anybody would be stupid enough to give a date, "We're leaving on this date," and then he left, they said, he was serious, they pulled back. They pulled back, then you see what happened, they pulled back, and then they went in with fury. But how about the 50 soldiers? He sold, a couple of months ago, a few months ago, he sent 50 of our finest, and instead of just sending them quietly, quietly sending them, what does he do? He sends them in, and he makes a big press conference or announcement that we are sending 50 soldiers into Iraq, Syria, and now, these soldiers have a big target on their back. Why can't we just keep our mouths shut? Why can't we be unpredictable? Why can't we be unpredictable? Why does he have to, first of all, it doesn't even sound good when you say 50 soldiers, because it sounds like so small, people would say, "Is that good or bad?" I mean, that sounds small. But then, when you think about it, why, why do we have to say that? These are extraordinary people, these are our finest, and they're, you know, very dangerous mission. Why would you tell people that we're sending them in? You just keep, you keep quiet, and let them accomplish something. They are right now, who knows what's happened to them? But right now, they have a big target on their back. People that we've let go of Gitmo have now killed Americans, you've seen that, you saw that yesterday, that came out yesterday, we let people go out of Gitmo, and they kill Americans, okay? Is anybody surprised at that thing? Would anybody be surprised? And we're keeping it open, now they're spending, you know, hundreds of millions to run it. I guarantee you, you could run it a lot cheaper, you'd have a lot of money left over. So we're gonna get efficiency in government, but we're gonna end Obamacare, we're gonna, we're gonna replace it. We're gonna replace it with something so much better and so much less expensive. We're gonna get rid of Common Core, we're gonna bring our education open. We are going to preserve our Second Amendment. It's under siege, it's totally under siege, and Christianity's under siege, I'll tell you, Christianity's under siege. You take a look, I, I'm with the, I'll tell you what, I've been with so many pastors lately, and Jerry Falwell Jr. is an example, was telling me that, first of all, he told me something, he says, "You remind me so much of my father," I thought his father was a great guy, what his father did with Liberty College and Liberty University, and then Jerry, to top it off, has taken that to a whole new place. But when Jerry was so strong and so great, but I was talking to, I probably had 50 of the ministers and pastors, different folks, came up to my office, and they're really under tremendous pressure, because they don't wanna have their tax-exempt status taken away. This happened during the Lyndon Johnson presidency, and I said, "Why is it that you folks are pushed around so much?" Christianity, these are the pastors, and these are strong people, these are really strong people. Why do you allow them? Why aren't you more forceful? And finally, somebody said, "Well, we have to be a little careful with our tax-exempt status." I said, "When did that happen, actually? It was during the Johnson..." Well, we're gonna try getting rid of that, okay? Because that's really terrible. We're gonna try getting rid, and I've said that to, I've said that to a lot of evangelicals, a lot of great Christians, we're gonna try getting rid of it, because it's taking, it sort of means that somebody walking down the street has more power than somebody of religion, of our religion, of Christianity, somebody that's an evangelical, you take anybody that have more power, because these people are powerless, they've actually taken their right of free speech away. So I said, "We're gonna try and get rid of that," and I think we'll be very, very successful. You know, it's interesting, I said, "How many Christians are there?" Because, you know, we got men, we got women, you cut it in half, we actually have a few more women, but we have far more Christians than we have men or women, so in a way, it's the most powerful lobby, it's the biggest group of people. But we're not allowed, they're not allowed to talk, because they're petrified. You saw what was happening with the IRS, and you saw what was taking place with regard to certain groups. So we are going to try, and usually when I say try, that means I'm gonna get it done. That means I'm gonna get it done. But we are gonna try very hard, we're gonna get that brought back, and I think it's gonna be very hard to counter it, because if the Christians and if the, look, if the whole evangelical Christian sector gets together, nobody, nobody can beat. You know, when I made the statement about Muslims, landing Muslims on a temporary basis, I took such heat, now people are saying, "You know, Trump is sort of right about that." Now they're all going, "Wow, I think they see what's happening." And I think if I would've said it about Christians, I would've had less opposition, that's what's happened to this country, okay? That's what's happened in our country. And we can't, we can't let it happen, we're gonna turn this country around, and we're gonna be the smart people, we're not gonna be the dummies anymore. We're not gonna be where China made last year's trade deficit, $505 billion, with a B, billion dollars. Japan, over $100 billion, Mexico, $58 billion. We're gonna build a wall, and Mexico's gonna pay for the wall, okay? I remember, recently, I was in Florida, and Marco, who's a nice guy, actually, you know, you notice how nice they are after you've defeated them? I like everybody I defeat. But when I went against Marco, it was supposed to be a very, uh, well, he started it, right? Just like Cruz started the last deal, he started it. But, but Marco came after me very viciously, you know, he wanted to be Don Rickles, right? And it didn't work. But what happened is, what happened is, I won by 20 points, almost 20 points. And a lot of these issues we were talking about, it was big issues, and frankly, I wish I would've left about two days early, I wanted to stay in Florida campaign, I wish I would've devoted two more days to Ohio, because I almost won in Ohio, I would've won Ohio. But I didn't wanna take a chance on leaving my beautiful Florida, look, because I love Florida, and I wanted to win that. So if I would've left a couple of days early, I think I would've won Florida probably by the same, but I'm not gonna have anything happen in Wisconsin, we have to win, if we... Look, we have to put these politicians in their place, folks, it's time. And believe me, you know, Cruz likes to pretend he's an outsider, in the meantime, he gets all the establishment support, including your governor. So believe me, believe me, they're all establishment. And frankly, in a way, it's worse, because Cruz is establishment, and yet he's got no relationship with the establishment. He goes and he stands on the floor of the Senate for a day and a half, and he filibusters. And these senators, look, I know, they're tough cookies, I have the best, I have one of the great people, Senator Jeff Sessions. Nobody better than Jeff. And you know, Cruz thought he was gonna have him, and he'd use him in a speech, "Senator Jeff Sessions," and then he comes out and he endorses me. But when you think of it, look, out of all of these senators, he has one supporter, Lee, who's his friend, I mean, it's his friend, but I'm sure, and by the way, it took him plenty of time to do it. But you know, to stand there and to rant and rave for two days, and to show people, "Here, you can filibuster," in the meantime, nothing was accomplished. Cruz has not accomplished one thing. So he's an insider, but it's almost like the man on the street, because he can't get anything done. He dislikes people, he calls people, like, for instance, he said horrible things about the speaker, and, and you know, he said about the speaker, and he said about separately, Mitch McConnell, I mean, he said some terrible things about, how do you get things done when you're calling Mitch McConnell bad names, okay? Let's just say bad name. So he's sort of got the worst of all elements, he's an insider totally, but he can get nothing done, okay? He can get nothing done. Your new speaker, how do you like Paul Ryan? How do you like him? Wow! I was told be nice to Paul Ryan, because, really? Well, he's the speaker, he's a nice guy, he called me the other day, he was very nice, but I got very surprised at the statement, wow! Are you all Republicans? Are you mostly conservatives? Because I don't care, you know, the word, I always say I'm a commonplace, you know, just a common-sense conservative. And so, so important, a common sense, and then somebody told me today, that somebody else, I think Walker used my term. You know, Walker used, I said, "Make America great again." I said, "Make America great again." And I copyrighted the term. And then Walker was making a speech many months ago, when he first started, and he was saying, "Make America great again," because he saw the response I got, the difference is he didn't get any response, you know, so that didn't help. But we told him, "You can't do that." That was the first little problem I had with him, he said, "You can't do it." Now I said, "A common-sense conservative," and today I heard he used a term, because the press was up, and they interviewed me, and they said, "He said he's a common-sense conservative." Well, I coined the phrase a few months ago, but that's what I am, I'm a conservative person, I'm very, very conservative on the military, I'm very conservative with our vets, and on healthcare, and on lots of things. But, and I'm actually very conservative on trade, but a lot of people would say he's not that conservative on trade, because he doesn't believe in free trade. Well, actually, I do believe in free trade, but it's gotta be good trade for us, right? It's gotta be smart trade. It can't be where Wisconsin's losing thousands and thousands of jobs, where you folks can't get into China, but China comes in here like it's, like it's Swiss cheese. That's what happens, you know, China does not obey the rules. Now, I get along great with China, I made a fortune dealing with China, I have two buildings because of China, big ones, in New York, and one in San Francisco, Bank of America, that I have in partnership with a great company, and it's because of China. I sell, I have the biggest, one of the big leases with one of their big banks, with the biggest bank in the world, actually, from China. I sell millions and millions of dollars to condos, condos, to people from China. I like China. I'm not angry at China. I like them. I think their leaders are doing a great job for them. But our leaders are doing a bad job for us. Same with Mexico. I get along great with them. The Hispanics, I love the Hispanics. I love the Hispanics. But their leaders are killing us on the border and they're killing us on trade. And I'm not angry at them. I'm angry at our country and our leadership because it's grossly incompetent and we're gonna change it around. And we're gonna get the best and we're gonna get the finest. So what I thought, thank you, folks. Thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. So whatever you can do to spread the word, I'll be around. I'm going to Green Bay. I love that team, by the way. You talk about a great franchise. Oh, yeah. And you have a truly great quarterback. I don't know, he's probably endorsing somebody else, but I don't care, he's still a great quarterback. Tom Brady's a friend of mine. He said, "You have a great quarterback." That's all I need, right? When Tom says he's a great quarterback, that's pretty good. But you know, I really wanna win Wisconsin. Because if we can win Wisconsin, we're gonna put all this stupidity away. We're gonna put these stupid, stupid people that allow, and I'm talking about basically politicians. And in many cases, you know, a lot of times, people will see deals that are done. And I mean, take a look at the Iran deal. How bad is that? I mean, just a deal. Forget about countries. But many times, people will say deals that the country makes, right? Deals are, and they'll say, "How can our politicians be so stupid?" They're not stupid. They've been hit by the lobbyists and the special interests and they make a fortune, okay? They get tremendous campaign contributions. They're not stupid. They're doing it for themselves. So again, I'm not doing that. I'm doing for you. I'm working for you. But just remember, they're not so stupid as you think. But when you look at the people funding Cruz's campaign and Kasich's campaign, and you look, don't forget, Cruz said, "Oh, the banks, the banks," you know, he's gonna be Robin Hood. He's gonna be this great guy. And then, in his personal financial disclosure form, he forgot to mention that he borrowed like about a million dollars from the banks, Citibank and Goldman Sachs. He borrowed a million dollars at an interest rate that everybody in this room would be proud to have, a very low interest rate, almost no interest. He forgot to announce it on his personal financial disclosure form. He just forgot. He said, "Oh, I forgot, I forgot, I forgot," you know? So then he hits the banks. He's controlled by these people, folks, okay? I mean, what he did was absolutely wrong. But they're controlled by these people. I'm controlled by you. I'm the right for you, okay? So remember that. So let's take a few questions, and then I'm off to Green Bay. I love that. Okay, let's go. Go ahead. Go ahead, yeah, go ahead. My biker, friends, we have to start with. Twenty-two veterans a day commit suicide. We're gonna take care of our veterans so much. Look, let me tell you. They, many of them kill themselves waiting for a doctor. They can't even get to see the doctor. You know that. They end up killing themselves before they see the doctor. Twenty-two a day, and a lot of people don't even believe that number. They think it's almost like an impossible number. How could it be so bad? And it's actually, could even be worse than that. But we are going to take care of them from the standpoint, they wait, they wait, then they get bad service, and they wait some more, six, seven, eight days, and sometimes they'll get to see the doctor, and the doctor says, "I can't see you now, I'm on vacation." You see the corruptness. I just left Phoenix. We had twenty-one thousand people. Sheriff Joe was there. The job he did was incredible, incredible. You know, they had a little protest, right? That protest ended so quick. He arrested three people, everyone else scattered. You know, a lot of, and you have that kind of a sheriff here. You have a tough cookie here. I can tell you. I just met him and I can tell you. But we're gonna, you know, I have a great policy plan and I've gotten a lot of credit for it in, it's on DonaldJTrump.com. And with the veterans, when they're waiting for exorbitant time, even for a little time, they're gonna go to the doctor, they're gonna go to local doctors or local hospitals. Many of the hospitals are dying for business. You know that. They're dying, these hospitals, some of these hospitals are dying. They're gonna get immediate treatment, immediate service, we're gonna pay the bill, and we're gonna save a fortune, and they're gonna get great service. And everybody is in love with it. Everybody loves it, and that's what's gonna happen. So we're gonna take care of our veterans. If we can't take care of our veterans, we can't take care of anyone. So we're gonna take care of our veterans. Go ahead. One more from my other biker friend here. Boy, you look good, though. You look good and tough. I wouldn't wanna fight you. You think I could take you in a fight? I don't think so. What do you think? How about we do it right now? That'd be great for television. Go ahead. But I do have more hair than him, right? Go ahead. Yeah. I know, it's terrible. Why do they say, I mean, if you could say, "Why are you unemployable?" Okay, I got it. Right, I know that. Daycare's a problem. I know. Right.
So then my wife only gets a hundred dollars a month, and my child only gets fifty dollars a month.
Right. I know. I've heard this many times.
So it's a very big offset between...
Let me tell you, here's the problem. Our veterans are taken worse care of than illegal immigrants that come into the country. You don't even have to write it down. We're gonna do things about it. You know what? Because I know, you know what you're saying? I've heard this so many times before with the daycare and everything else. We are gonna take care of our vets.
Well, as veterans also don't get any annual increase.
That's right.
Well, you can do an executive order.
And by the way, by the way, speaking of increase, Cruz and Kasich want to destroy your Social Security, folks, okay? I wanna bring money back into this country. I wanna bring jobs into this country. I wanna bring tremendous wealth into this country. I wanna take our wealth back from China, from Mexico, from all of these countries that have our wealth. They've taken it out like we're a bunch of babies. And we're gonna save your Social Security and we're gonna save your Medicare. They wanna get rid of it, okay? Remember that.
Well, with that saying, that too, is also that you can give the veteran with a disability and/or permanent total an annual increase automatically.
You could do that.
Because you could do an executive order, right?
Well, you could do. I wanna, I wanna not use too many executive orders, folks. Because you know, executive orders sort of came about more recently. Nobody ever heard of an executive order. Then all of a sudden Obama, because he couldn't get anybody to agree whether he starts signing them like they're butter. So I wanna do away with executive orders for the most part. But look, just do me a favor, stick with me, you're gonna be okay. All right? All right? Okay? You're gonna be okay. I know. What you've said, I've heard a hundred times. And the daycare is a huge problem. Huge problem. And your wife not working, huge problem. She can't. So anyway, and I'll bet you have a great wife. Good wife? Better believe it. Okay, yeah, go ahead.
I work in education.
Right.
What are you gonna do to help get the local control back to...
What we're doing, we're ending Common Core. You're not gonna be educated. Your kids in Wisconsin are no longer going to be educated in Washington DC by bureaucrats, many of whom, I can't say all, but many of whom don't care for your kids. They couldn't care less. They get big fat salaries. Your kids are going to be educated locally. We're terminating Common Core. And you will see something, you will see something that's magical. And I've seen it where parents and all of these people, they're all in the, the uncles, the aunts, they're all on school boards, they get professionals, they have great principals. You can't see what's going on from Washington DC. Many of the people never even come here. They sit behind a desk in Washington, they draw big salaries, and they're telling you how to educate your kids. Not gonna happen that way. And I've even seen it where the kid graduates, the child graduates, and those parents, they are, they love it because their child went through the system. They love it, and they become so good at it. That's what's gonna happen. We're one of the worst in the world in education. We're going to be one of the better ones. Not necessarily, you know, I don't know that we're gonna beat Sweden, Norway, Denmark, and China. But we're gonna come very close, okay? Yes, go ahead. Discipline in school. I don't think that Wisconsin should have a big problem with discipline. Do you have a problem with discipline? You're from where?
Minnesota, Minnesota.
Oh, that's interesting. Well, we have to get discipline back in the country. Forget about school. I mean, I have a case, I have a wonderful guy, a campaign manager, you talk about discipline. And you probably saw what happened today with my campaign. He's a good guy, Cory. And by the way, the easiest thing? Cory, you're fired. I can't do that. Can't do it. So fortunately, I have a taping system, you know, very, I'm rich, so I have tapes a lot. So this young woman who complained was, "Whoa," she was talking about being maybe thrown to the floor and all this. I said, "Oh, that's her." And then we saw the tapes. Did anybody see the tape? What did you think, right? Nothing. Women are, so what did you think? What did you? I mean, she wasn't like, her face stayed the same. If somebody squeezed your arm or did something really bad, don't forget, initially, she said, "thrown to the floor." But if somebody squeezed your arm or hurt you, wouldn't you start screaming or something? Did you see any change in her face? Yeah. It's same. It's horrible. It's horrible. It's, honestly, it's horrible. And the best thing I could do is say, "But I can't destroy a man." I destroyed, got a beautiful wife and children, and I'm not gonna destroy a man for that. And you know, when I saw that at the tape, at first I said, "Oh, this is terrible." Then I saw the tape, "It's my tape. I'm the one that had the tape." It's on the ceiling of this incredible club in Jupiter, Florida. And we're all leaving, and we have a press conference, right? And the press conference lasted a long time, it was like forty-five minutes. So that was enough. I'm leaving with a whole big gang of people, people pushing left and right, left and right, and all of a sudden, she bolts into the picture. She had, she grabs me or hits me on the arm. In fact, I'm like this with my arm up. And then he goes by and I'm, I mean, maybe he touched her a little bit, but I didn't, it was almost like he was trying to keep her off me, right? Like he was helping her. Yeah. And did you see her fall to the ground? Okay. Because she talked about falling to... Now after, I must tell you, her statement changed big league because she said, "Go to the ground." You know all this. I could read it to you. Does anybody wanna hear it? I mean, I wanna be accurate because I like the press, Jimmy. So before she knew she was on tape, she said, "I was jolted backwards." Was she jolted backwards? I mean, if she was, her face stayed the same, so I mean, "I was jolted backwards. Someone grabbed me tightly by the arm and yanked me down." Campaign managers aren't supposed to forcefully throw reporters to the ground. Except, she never went to the ground. She never even came, she never even flinched. She didn't, you know, if somebody grabs you, even one of the guys, even the bikers, if somebody grabs even a bike or punches you a little bit, you go, "Whoa," right? I mean, the toughest guy, the toughest woman, look at her face, it's zero. They're gonna destroy a man's life? And then I have Cruz say, "Oh, that was a terrible thing. That was a terrible thing." Let me tell you something, folks. If I win, if I lose, I didn't need to do this. I'm doing this because I just had a beautiful grandchild. Ivanka and Jared, beautiful, beautiful grandchild. I'm very proud. It's my eighth. I'm doing this all for them. I didn't need to do this. It's not so easy. And I had no idea, you know, maybe none of us did, you know, I had no idea the message was gonna get across. It's a message of competence, you know? It's a message, it really is. It's a message of common sense and it's a message of competence. And I had no idea that we'd have millions of more votes than we had when we had that stiff, Mitt Romney, a total stiff, running. Who, by the way, he's a dumb. He's not a smart person, I'll tell you right now. Let me, let me tell you about Mitt Romney. That was an election that he shouldn't want and he lost. And he should just go away and let the big boys do it now because you were... That's an election that should've been won. And you know, I bid, I'll tell you why. I helped John McCain, and at that time, honestly, that was a tough deal for him because the world was sort of collapsing, and that was a tough one. But he lost. And I helped Mitt Romney a lot, and he lost. And I said, "This time, we're gonna do it ourselves, okay? We're gonna win. We're gonna win." So just remember that. We're gonna win because of Wisconsin. Okay, a couple more questions. How about a woman? Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead. Right, she's so smart, I don't want her to know. I don't wanna tell Putin what I'm thinking. She's so smart. What you just said is, what does that say? What about Ukraine? Don't worry about Ukraine. Ukraine's gonna be fine. Just don't ask me why. You know, you know, it's just this world of politics. Mr. Trump, you said, don't forget, I'm the one that said, "Take the oil." I was right. They didn't take the oil. You know who has the oil right now? ISIS has the oil. You know that Libya, ISIS has all that oil from Gaddafi, all of that big oil from Gaddafi. He took it. We're like a bunch of dummies. Why aren't we embarguing? Why aren't we creating a nice big circle so they can't get the oil out? Why aren't we taking that oil back? Look, look, I'm the one that says though, I don't wanna say everything. If I win, I have a good chance of winning, I'm the front-runner by a lot, I wanna go in there, I wanna knock the hell out of ISIS. I don't wanna tell all... I really mean this. I don't wanna tell everybody in this room, and look at all the cameras that are going now, I don't wanna tell the world what I'm gonna do. Because they're watching. Just let me do it, folks. I will do it. You will be so happy. You don't have to know the details, okay? Let me do it. You know, I used the word before, we have to be a little bit unpredictable. We can't say, "Well, we're gonna go and attack on March fourteenth, and then we're gonna hit 'em from the front, and then we're gonna hit 'em from the back." You know, Obama did that eight months ago with one of the cities. You know, Obama did that eight months ago with one of the cities. He said, "We're going in next week." Look, folks, folks, folks. You know, you have to trust... There has to be some trust, right? You trust? We've gotta stop... We've gotta stop the stupid. That's why I really think your question is so great. I don't wanna hear how you're gonna do it, Mr. Trump. Just do it. I'll do it, okay? I love that... That woman. That woman. Thank you, honey. Thank you. Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Trump, Melissa wants to thank you. She's got something to say.
Okay, hi.
Hi, Mr. Trump. I was Miss Wisconsin USA in 2005.
Okay.
And, um...
I can see why.
Thank you. You have been... I just wanna say thank you. You saved me in so many ways. And in recent years, I've been struggling with an incurable illness, and I'm on home care now. It was caused by a doctor's medical negligence. And in those dark days, fighting... Right now, all the tubes have been removed, and I have a do-not-resuscitate order. And I have a seven-year-old son. In those days, in the hospital, I received from you a handwritten letter that said, "To the bravest woman I know." And...
I remember that. Yeah, I remember that.
And you, um...
Such a wonderful, beautiful woman. I mean, just an amazing woman. And are you... Are you doing... Are you coming along okay?
Um, no, sir. But that's okay, 'cause I'm here right now to thank you in person, and that was my biggest dream. And I wanted to thank you, because through you and your organizations, my son, who is Mexican-American, seven years old, through your organizations, and just being able to stand on that stage with you back in 2005, the outpouring of love that came from that ultimately provided my son, when he graduates high school, with a, um, a full ride to college.
That's great. And you know what we'll do? We're gonna watch him. You're gonna watch him, Tana. Tana, watch him. We're gonna be watching your boy, okay? But you're gonna hopefully be around. You're not gonna have to have anybody watching. You're gonna hopefully be around. Those doctors are gonna be so wrong. But we'll be helping you.
So we thank you. God bless you. And just, you know, he's a Mexican-American. And you, because of your efforts, have sent him to college. And I've been writing letters to him for when I'm in heaven to tell him that what you've done for him now, he has a great responsibility to pay it forward, just as you have done for us. And I can't thank you...
That's so nice. Thank you, honey. Thank you. I'm sorry, I have to go down and say hello. Is that okay?
Thank you. God bless you. Here you go, Mr. Trump. Here you go.
Wow, what a great woman that is. That's a great woman. Great mother. I remember that, and it's heartbreaking, but it's... Something beautiful's gonna happen. You watch. Something beautiful is gonna happen. Folks, I just wanna say, I'd almost like to leave it on that, because we can't top that. That is so amazing. Thank you. Thank you. You know, that little... Very sad, but I think it's gonna be really a story of hope, and something really great is gonna happen out of that. You watch. But it sort of tells me, when I first did this, people would say, "Oh, it'll cost a lot." Forgetting about the campaign, that's peanuts by comparison. You know, I've spent tens of millions of dollars. But the big thing, I lost certain businesses, and I owned the Miss Universe Pageant. I bought it very inexpensively many years ago, 15 years ago. And because of the fact that they thought I was against this one or that one, I had a hard time with television. Now, the good news is, I sold it for a wonderful... I was very happy, okay, with that. But I didn't wanna sell it, but I sold it.